Anybody there?
Well, they gotta at least show up to meetings or do something. I mean, that's what you do.
Yeah, for the, I used to go to the main kids. It was horrible. You know, they, they, they all, they all.
No, I know, but now, but now the public comment is.
I went to, when they were making the change, need to go to five, six, seven rooms. But again, some people just have their own agendas and it's all they're interested in.
I can't hear anything, folks.
I think that's by design, Alex.
Alex, is this working? Can you hear us now?
Yes.
John's got a thumb up, too.
Thanks. Look at that. Learned something new this week.
Right. Okay, Alex, I introduced you to, so thank the facility's presentation. Are you ready to do that at this time?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Two about few things tonight. First item would be Stroud Doors, Stroud Water Main, EPC two, Capital Project 2019 Phase One and Capital Improvement Project Phase Two. All right, the first item, Stroud Doors, still, still ongoing. Did a punch list walkthrough with March Associates on May 27th. Still a few items remaining. We got the contractor back in there on the ninth and waiting to see how that work goes and we'll walk through again and hopefully, again, hopefully, the last time we do this. Any questions on that? Okay, the second thing, the Stroud Water Main, we received two bids. Labella, our architect, is in the process of checking references for the company that was the lowest bid. Right now, things look pretty good for that. We want to get that going because we're looking to start right after school's out and we'd like to be done on July 10th for that school use on the 12th there. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Is that one of the type of project where we have to go with the lowest bidder or is it the lowest responsible bidder?
Yes, we put out, we put out a bid following the normal procedures. I'm pretty comfortable with the lowest bidder right now and they're, they are checking the references and vetting them.
Do we have to take them if they're the lowest bidder or can we go with someone else if we figure out that they're not who we want them to be?
I think that would probably be a, a better answer coming from Dave, Mr. Drydell or Mr. Meza. I would anticipate that there would be avenues to do that if, if we chose to use them.
Well, it's the lowest responsible bidder, so once we had a, a bad reference or, or, you know, a documentation, then we would have to use them.
All right.
Alex, what if that extends beyond the time, and this might be a Chris Brewer or Peter question, but should they open it up and find more problems and it's not done, what do we do about the building use that is supposed to start on the 12th?
Well, that wouldn't happen due to, to the fact that we wouldn't have any, any water if things went horribly wrong. I anticipate a little bit of detail work still needing to be done as far as reseating areas, backfilling, things like that. We will try to make it as safe as possible, but if there's no water supply, we will have to come up with alternative plans. But I don't anticipate that happening. Probably at this point, things that could possibly go wrong when they open that up is seeing that the city has some work to do on their portion of the, of the main. And I would hope that they would do that expeditiously for us. They have been in the loop right along. So they're fully aware and we reached out to see what the condition and age of their portion of the pipe was and they seem confident that the pipe, that is their responsibility is, is okay.
Now, are we excavating from the street to the building or?
Nope, nope. The sidewalk is directly in front of Stroud. I don't know if folks are familiar with where the gas main goes into the building. It's right in the front by the bus loop. The water main is about six feet to the left. It almost is on top of the, the gas main, so I think we should be good there. The city, if, if they had to replace their section, they would excavate from the sidewalk to the middle of the street. That, that would be their responsibility. We're just excavating from the sidewalk to the building and under the footing into the crawl space.
We are gonna, we are gonna do it with a ditch hollow way rather than punching through or anything like that?
Through, we, we will, we will, right now, the spec says to go under the footer, but we will ditch up to the foundation and then dig under the footer. You're welcome. Any other questions on that one? Okay. EPC Phase Two, some early work has begun already on June 7th. On second shift in some out of the way areas like boiler rooms and mechanical rooms. They wanted to get a head start on running some wires, mounting some control boxes and things of that nature. Zero impact to instruction in the buildings. The cloth boiler work, they're looking to start that as soon as possible. Just like we're suffering, the trades are suffering, staff shortages. Due to lack of staff available to the contractor, they would like to get an earlier start as the crew sizes aren't what they would hope for. So there's limited people to work on the capital projects as well as help us out with our cleaning and things like that. The, the labor market's very tight. So that's, we're looking to do that. There should be no impact to the staff or students at cloth while this is going on.
You're working in all the elementary schools and stuff daily or what?
Yes. Let's see here, stadium support as well. So we, we have LED lighting happening in part of Phase Two. Let's have the list here. We have lighting at Ridge Mills, Stokes, Bellamy, Joy, Gansvort, Denty District Office slash Cloth. So that'll replace all the interior and exterior fluorescent incandescent metal halide lighting with LED. There will also be a control system to take advantage of light harvesting and give the teachers more versatility with lighting in their room when they have the smart boards on, et cetera. There's going to be a building envelope at those schools which will seal a lot of those nooks and crannies that are pretty much hidden from view when you walk into a building where the roof meets the exterior walls. The foundation meets the building, things of that nature that will seal those. There will also be some door sweeps where needed and some window refurbishment and ceiling as well. We're gonna get a couple of systems converted from glycol. Glycol as a media doesn't perform as well. It doesn't transfer heat as well as water and they're looking to gain efficiency. So they're looking to change over. We're also repairing some fitting leaks in valves in the pipe systems at Denty and Bellamy. I think I brought this to your attention previously where there was improper connectors used there, so they, they leaked and we're gonna get those fixed now. Denty's getting an electric booster heater that will replace the natural gas heater for efficiency sake. I can remember not too long ago, you know, back maybe showing my age, but about 20 years, 30 years ago, they did the opposite. So that's how things have changed in the world. Used to be that natural gas was considered more efficient. Now we're going to electric. So pretty much district wide, we're getting the controls upgrade. This is gonna be, it won't be noticed in the buildings, but it will be noticed here in our building with the server, the control system that Mark and HVAC, or HVAC and maintenance techs use will be new. So we'll have better access and better control over the system district wide. It's, it's nothing that anyone would see unless we showed it to them. Hopefully, they would feel the difference in, in comfort. Vertical unit ventilators controls in a couple of our buildings, Ridge Mills, Bellamy, Gansvort and Denty. There was some controls that had burned out over the years, their fan controls. I believe I brought these up before. Basically, variable drives that kind of act like your, the system in your car where the, the fan will ramp up and slow down depending on, on the need. So when you get in your car and it's really cold in the morning, if you notice, if you have that, it will boost your fan up and then back off as your car starts to warm up. It'll do the same thing in the classrooms. Let's see here. That's pretty much it for that. Any questions on that? Sure. Okay. All right, so moving on to Capital Improvement Project Phase One. Yes, there was still some Phase One work left, which was the through wall flashing that was a picture in the, in the paper recently. That was actually the through wall flashing work being done. It wasn't the membrane work that we discussed. So that has been completed as of about a week ago. Tomorrow morning, I will walk through with Labella in the construction management to do a punch list and check that out. I've been keeping an eye on it the whole time. Things look okay, so we'll do our official punch list walkthrough tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Any questions on that? Okay, and then Capital Improvement Project Phase Two, the work's beginning on June 21st. Like I, I reported before, we had a lack of mechanical bidders. We are gonna rebid that at the end of June, hopefully for a July award. I'm hoping that we get some more participants with that. See, we're trying to get the pool repump, pump replaced as part of that. If that falls through, we'll try to get it as a change order through the GC. That's very needed. It was very disconcerting to me that we didn't get any bidders as that work is, is very critical to keep the pool running and, and get it back open in time. The additional area of roof is, is being replaced. That's the area adjacent to the pool roof area that probably saw that video and we spoke about before. So we're getting that in the project. Little bit of an issue is the insulation required for the roof. The lead times due to what we're all going through have increased. We're looking to August for roof insulation and there's not gonna be much going on, on the roof until we get there. What they're gonna plan on doing is do as much work as we can and try to stay watertight when we reinstall new vapor barrier. They should keep us watertight. So we could still do some work, but the insulation is one of the final layers before the, the roof is complete. So we can work up to that point, but I'm hoping that that date does not get pushed back. I know my experience shows that you can do roofs on high schools while school is in session with very little impact. We will stage and place the contractors and their materials out of the way as much as possible. But generally, other than, you know, some thumping now and then, you know, the roofs are very much, they're, they're higher than your, your house roof. So it has to be a pretty big noise for it to carry through the building, but I think, I think we'll be okay. Right now, we really don't have a whole lot of choice. We need to get that roof fixed and, and as quickly as possible. We did meet with the high school administration on June 8th, excuse me, to go over logistics scheduling impacts. Everything seemed to work out at the time. We're gonna keep Mr. LaBaron and his team up to speed with any changes that come up. And finally, I know I didn't have it on my list, but just in case you were wondering what went on at Bellamy yesterday afternoon. We had a fan drive that we're, it's one of the exact things that we're looking to get fixed. Failed, produced a little bit of a puff of smoke and a little bit of a popping noise. And we had to unhook it and we went back this morning and checked things out. We're confident that that's what happened and we're gonna get that replaced. So in case you heard or had any questions about that, that's what happened and you know, it's something that has failed over the years here in the other buildings like I described. Any questions on any of that or any other questions?
What's the duration of the roof work at, at our, okay, you said it's going to start around the beginning of August? Very pricing, the whole roof, right?
No, not the whole roof. Originally, as part of the project, we were just gonna do the area above the pool. After our maintenance guys shared that video with me and we checked it out. You know, there's a lot more area that, that has lack of adhesion, basically all the area to, depending on which side, you know, adjacent to the pool area. So it's not the entire roof that's getting placed, replaced at this time.
What, what's the duration of completion time once they start out?
Let's see here.
While you're looking that up, that includes the area over the gym, right?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Edge will head the roof. Let's see here. The pool roof removal and, and reinstallation was slated to be complete on August 20th. So that was, that was a 35 day duration. So I anticipate that if we don't get the insulation, we're going into September, possibly October with that. Remember, doing a roof is, is also gonna be weather dependent. If we got some bad weather, hopefully we don't. That would delay things a little bit more.
You're gonna be tearing everything off and then putting on something with secondary barrier while the body.
Yes, well, it's, it's, it's a, the vapor barrier is a permanent part of it, but they will just, they'll put that on now, which kind of helps us stay watertight, similar to your residential roof. I don't know if you're very familiar. You, you could tear off your roof. You'll usually see this. They'll tear off your roof, but before they leave for the day, they will get your felt paper down and drip edge. So at least if it rains that night, you're still watertight. It's not your full roof, but it still will keep you watertight for a short, a short period of time.
So Alex, what is that impact for our athletic season and our use of the pool? I, I feel your pain. I'm in a construction project at work and materials are terribly delayed. So I know it's beyond our control, but how much Plan B thinking do we have to consider?
Final cleanup and turnover of the pool area was slated for December 10th.
Even if we had everything as we thought?
That was everything going well. Yeah, that's, there's a lot of work going, happening in the pool area. Just go briefly give you a list. Locker room flooring, they, they trench and excavate the pool deck for the bonding that Peter just mentioned, concrete and tile replacements. The duct work, remember, we are gonna reconfigure the exhaust system in there, the duct work. Final clean and refill, new bleachers are also being installed. And the, the, the roof, we're, we're going all the way down to the beams. We're getting a new deck in all, all the, the substrate, membrane, vapor barrier, insulation, all the way up till it's complete. So that whole area there is, is all gonna be brand new, brand new design, the whole thing. The other area is gonna be replacement of insulation membrane, things like that, not the decking.
Peter, are we are looking to?
We are.
Well, I, I couldn't recall and it's been so weird this year. I didn't know if we ended it.
I assume some protective measures for the gym are more than taken as well in case there's any type of leakage while they're working on it.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yep, it's, it's written into the, most of the specs and I will be keeping an eye, eye on things as well. Any more questions on that or any other questions?
We're done. Alex can't block the report.
Are we all set? Thanks, Alex. You're welcome. Nice working with you. That's correct. Thank you.
Good, good thinking there.
Thanks, Alex.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so at this point, I would move ahead and you just make the recommendation. And normally for our audience, we do this with the individual board members. They take a recommendation and do it. And the individual come up and say, respond to, please pick up your, your citation. Is that okay? So what I'd like to do is I'd like to start with our student board member or student, who may have heard to read the first resolution on this report.
Resilience for commendation, whereas the Board of Education has the wrong to be so late. Encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. Whereas Adeline Rivera has demonstrated valid points of the 2021 graduating class of Montreux Academy with a grade point average of 101.95. And whereas Adeline Rivera has brought credit to herself for teachers and interns who belong to the school district. Now therefore be it resolved as members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools who hereby congratulate and commend Adeline Rivera who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout her high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread the resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I second.
Exactly.
Resilience for commendation, whereas the Board of Education has the wrong to be so late. Encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Raphael Rivera has been declared the senior volunteer of the 2021 graduating class of the Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 101.93. And whereas Raphael Rivera has brought credit to himself, right? To himself, his teachers and interns to the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools be hereby congratulate and commend Raphael Rivera who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout his high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread the resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting.
All in favor? Resilience for commendation, Board of Education belongs to the school district to be heard. To recognize such excellence whenever possible. Whereas Jonathan Johnson has been ranked third in the 2021 graduating class of Montreux Academy with a grade point average of 101.71. Jonathan, where Jonathan's staff has brought credit to himself and teachers who belong to the school district. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools be hereby congratulate and commend Jonathan. Who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout his high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution. And the minutes of tonight's meeting and the resolution.
As a number four, resolution for commendation, whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Brandon Wugel has been ranked fourth in the 2021 graduating class of Montreux Academy with a grade point average of 101.43. And whereas Brandon Wugel has brought credit to himself, his teachers and interns to the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools be hereby congratulate and commend Brandon Wugel who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievements throughout his high school years. And then be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I move the resolution.
Resolution for five, resolution for commendation, whereas the Board of Education hopefully still has the concerns that the government should recognize such excellence whenever possible. and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Jonathan Desai has been ranked fifth in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 101.21. And whereas Jonathan Desai has brought credit to himself as teachers and interns in the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Jonathan Desai who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout his high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I move the resolution. Resolutions for accommodations. Whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Deanna Capocha has been ranked sixth in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 101.6. And whereas Deanna Capocha has brought credit to herself as teachers and interns to the Rome City School District. Uh, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Deanna Capocha who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout her high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I move the resolution.
I'll ask Mr. Boyd to read one of these, but I think I'll ask him. Because he couldn't imagine after reading your case.
I think the other one, regulations for accommodations. Whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Avery Hildebrand has been ranked seventh in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 100.85. And whereas Avery Hildebrand has now, has brought credit to herself as teachers and interns in the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Avery Hildebrand who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout her high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, resolutions for accommodations. Whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Olivia Bound is ranked eighth in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 100.3. And whereas Olivia Bound has brought credit to himself as teachers and interns to the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Olivia Bound who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout her high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Uh, I need the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions for accommodations. Whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Louis Fleming has been ranked ninth in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 100.3. And, uh, whereas Louis Fleming has brought credit to resolve for teachers and interns in the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Louis Fleming who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout his high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting. I move the resolution. Congratulations.
Resolutions for accommodations. Whereas the Board of Education of the Rome City School District encourages academic excellence and wishes to recognize such excellence whenever possible. And whereas Dominic Baltieri has been ranked tenth in the 2021 graduating class of Rome City Academy with a grade point average of 99.97. And whereas Dominic Baltieri has brought credit to himself as teacher and interns in the Rome City School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools can hereby congratulate and commend Dominic Baltieri who has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement throughout his high school years. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education be and hereby is directed to spread this resolution on the minutes of tonight's meeting.
I move the resolution. Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Thanks for keeping a monitor, Jerry. What will we do about?
Good thing you remember how this works. It's been two years, the rest is forgotten.
Right.
Uh, first of all, this is awesome to be able to have an audience, the first audience we've had all year. So thank you for making time for us tonight. And, uh, normally when they have a room full of people in a board meeting, it's a little bit more tense up here. I'm wondering why everyone's stood up. We know that's not the case for right now. So congratulations to students, uh, you know, uh, you look at some of these numbers each year and you're baffled by how competitive it is at the top of any graduating class. It's a tough phase. What, uh, you've all achieved in your time, uh, is phenomenal. I'll just share a brief story with all of you because I don't know that I remember most of you from middle school, but as I was signing diplomas today, I was finishing that cap and, uh, came across the name that I remembered from middle school. And it dawned on me that this graduating class, I believe, was in eighth grade my first year. So that's when you start, I, you hear those stories, mother superintendent. You tell them, I, you know, I can't really, that's, I don't know. And then you start to feel like, wow, am I getting old or what's going on here? But I, I don't, I don't recall, I remember any of you from eighth grade. But, uh, I do know that it's interesting to see who comes through, they go from, you know, elementary to middle school to high school. So, uh, it was unique. It was a nice touching memory for me to think about, uh, the journey that I've been able to share for part of your academic journey, five of those 13 years. Uh, and I look forward to hearing about the great successes that you all continue on in your careers and lives. Uh, thank you for being a part of the Rome Free Academy tradition and history. And we look forward to great things you bring, uh, to the Rome community and to, uh, that tradition, to grow in your, in your forward. So thank you all. Congratulations. Glad to have you here.
Yeah, I think, thanks, Rick.
You can try and do this, you can do it outside.
Yeah, so if everybody wants to, I will.
Thank you. Hi. Actually, your career's over now, so you're okay. It's almost a sign, I can give you yours right now, once, my office. I can do that, boy. It's officially official, I guess. Hey, how we doing on this, can you break, by the way?
For those of us that were virtual, we enjoyed the five belly salute. That was fun.
Did you like that?
Every time you guys stood up, we got bellies.
John said it was like Catholic mass.
Yes, it was.
The first one, I realized and figured I should hit camera off before I stood up, but then it was going too fast.
It was going too fast, I tried to do it too.
And then I was two or three, I was two or three deep by the time, I was like, yeah, I might as well just finish it out.
All right, Mort, you want to go ahead? Are you awake?
I'm awake, I was listening and, uh, heard the five belly salute, all the laughs, it was great. The, uh, the good thing. Uh, actually, I'm catching my daughter's last softball game of modified, so she's, I'm sorry, I just, I, I'm selfish, I had to watch her play. The, uh, the advantage we've had this month was that we had two people operations committee meetings. Uh, just want to add that, and having those, uh, we did put down the creation on tonight's agenda of a number of new positions. Uh, one of the positions that we discussed that's on that list now is a principal clerk position. That principal clerk position is to fill in up in supported learning. We needed more of a, uh, leadership role with the number of clerical we have in that area and the responsibilities of that individual. The, um, the current position that's up in supported learning is, uh, uh, senior typist. A senior typist is what we fill, uh, our building secretaries with. It's the head secretary of the buildings, um, so it's equivalent. And, uh, we all know that there's a lot of duties, uh, legal duties as well as able, uh, submissions through Medicaid, uh, that we had that person doing. So we wanted to, um, add that to our list of requests of positions. So I didn't want anyone to see something come through, uh, that they didn't know from a prior people operations meeting. That's merely there to, uh, reflect the discussion for a title change.
Peter, is, uh, or Jeff, is there a reason that the secretary, that you said the highest is the senior typist? Is there a reason that that one is not a complimentary secretary, the same as?
Technically, you're only a competent secretary if you're the secretary of the school. So we have confidence, indoor or outdoor, sorry, but we have confidence, but it's just not possible. But they had to ask for that, had to try and educate folks on the fact that you're only one secretary by law, through teachers.
I, I just, I try to, it's difficult because.
There's a lot of confidence.
Now for three leaders in that department, three leaders in Chris Brewer's area, like, there's a, there's a lot more people that are reporting to us, I guess.
Well, they got, they got about five secretaries for, for the learn. So they, the different directors could have different clerical staff to work with. The problem we have right now is, uh, in this position, right, we're asking to bump up what's the lead secretary in that office position. And then the other people have been in tomorrow, February, and we can't, ironically, as the president of the office today, the service test was offered and taken, and they're worried, and they still have not released the results of that test. So we've got open positions that we want to fill and fill because we don't have a, uh, an algorithm to go off. Even though we know that there's people that took the test, we didn't know that. So it's really becoming a challenge. Well, when they're full staff, but when they're full staff, it could be.
So, uh, the, uh, another item that we just wanted to, uh, place on this evening's agenda, uh, was, uh, we, while we have an appointment of an assistant principal at the middle school, we have resignation of one of the assistant principals at, uh, the high school. Just wanted to mention that Emily Dodd's been with us, this is her third year. She's really done a great job, um, and she's been an asset to the, the district. So, um, just wanted to make mention that, uh, she will be parting ways with the district, but, uh, wish her the best, she did a very nice job, uh, at the high school. Pardon?
That's a big loss.
It, it is. The one thing that I'm sure that Lee is, uh, going to enjoy this evening is we have a number of summer school appointments on this evening's agenda. So we're getting those programs up, as you all recall, last year, uh, that was one of the things that was touch and go and, uh, really didn't come off the ground like, uh, our students necessarily needed. And it is something that, um, pleased that we can offer this summer, uh, is that extended program as well as the 444 program. And, um, so you'll, you'll see the appointments on there for our students, for our staff.
I'm, I'm just excited that you found nurses. This is good, all good.
Well, uh, you know, we, we have some, we, we, I don't want to say we have some, we have great nurses in the district. And, uh, it's working with them and, uh, and really having them, uh, giving them the problem and the room to fix it. So, um, we worked with the staff, we got the, the necessary people and, uh, just super pleased that we're able to, to staff that because the nurses are that, uh, they're the hinge pin and everything. Um, that being said, uh, the, I, we have to reset our meeting agenda for people operations. It's a reorganizational meeting, um, but, uh, it has been beneficial. Uh, so Jonathan, uh, I know we spoke about this earlier as we were going back and forth about the committee meetings, but I think it's been beneficial to get information out, uh, prior to the board meetings, um, so we can have some, some fruitful conversations and then bring it to the full board. So it's really my full report, I just wanted to share in hindsight, I think the, the people operation meetings were beneficial. Lee, would you like to add anything with this point or?
Uh, no, just that it was a pleasure chairing this committee. It was super effective, very efficient, and Jeff and especially Shelley did a fantastic job. Thank you.
And thank you, Lee, for, for taking it on and, uh, reading all these names every week, too. So you're really learning our staff well.
You're reading them all tonight, right, Lee?
No, as outlined on the agenda, will go down as my famous contribution to the board.
But they, in all seriousness, Lee, thanks for everything. Uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you and thank you for your, uh, participation with the board.
Thank you.
Moving right along, uh, people with the minutes of the regular meeting of 99.21. So he's, um, the second, upset in the, uh, in discussion.
Yes, I would like to point out, I'm very disappointed that we disposed of the megaphone at Stroud. I think we could repurpose that if we really tried.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any additions or depositions to the agenda?
Uh, one deotion, we need to remove, uh, item number one on the old, the table.
I'm sorry, it was tough to hear, did you say that we're tabling that again?
Uh, we are removing the item.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
Required the super.
Evening, everybody. Thanks again for a little time to have an audience for a few minutes, right? I don't know if you're looking at our screen, so I don't know what to look anymore, but that was nice. There's a lot of great things going on in the district in June, a lot of fun days happening on elementary school. It's crazy to get around, meet the kids, do these fun things. Again, the high school got some great activities in the hall last weekend. Some fun stuff on Facebook to be able to see that. And some fun reading in class to do the movie that it is today, doing your prom on Saturday at RFA and next week is littered with all kinds of activities. At elementary school, the graduation walk is scheduled for next Wednesday. Senior classes visiting all of the other buildings in the district and having gowns, just kind of walking through and seeing the kids. So let's all fun stop Stroud orientation is happening next week as well for the elementary kids, the parents who vote Stroud and they live in the building. And June, ironically, it's been a long road, but feels more like a normal school year than anything we've experienced in a very long time. And it's, it's kind of just when you get it back together, it's fun to do it. So, but it's good to be around kids and the activities again. Some good highlights from girls track, as always, strong seasons. They did well in sectional. We had three sectional champions this year from RFA. One was in the shot foot. We had Alexis Kennedy. In this case, we had Michaela Pasquatt. And in the 500 meter, who broke several RFA records this evening, we had Emily Hall with Hannah, I always hear her last record. So Emily has been setting records for about a month now and once again broke the RFA record in the personal net last week in a sectional. But graduation, both ladies, and another outstanding year for girls track. Other sports still continuing the sectional, little baseball playing tonight at Uville. Not quite sure who else, but it's happening a lot. Just trying to do things outside, right? Just a quick update, Friday, next Friday, the district will be off in observance of the weekend holiday. We will have some things next week happen within the building. We're going to ask our staff to do some work with the kids and kind of understand a little bit about why we're having that day off and what we can represent. Just some good conversations to help kids understand what's happening and what's going on so that it's not just a simple, hey, we're going to have this day off now. We do it for every other American holiday throughout the course of the year. So we're going to start by kind of leading that way, if you will, with next Friday. But next Friday, students and staff will be off. That's due this year. Graduation planning continues to go well. We had another meeting today. We meet about every week, kind of trying to iron some things out. I know the high schools either sent home a letter today, or we sent one home tomorrow about what to expect. Some very broad information that I'll give to folks, all one ceremony, the entire class together. Each student will receive four tickets at the rehearsal event today before graduating. So families that are wondering when their kids' tickets, the students need to come to the rehearsal to get the ticket. Unfortunately, rehearsals a little bit more important this year than years past because it's a little bit of a different way to get a new thing without putting that back into the digital world further. So it is more important that we have the kids there, but that's the ticket for going out. Visitors will be asked to do a free screen prior entering the event. We'll send you to the account manager's office, including website links to where you can do your free screen, your adaptation regarding COVID. And if you really would like to be supportive and help out with graduation, take yourself and ten other people and just start calling the governor every day and asking them to make the graduation requirements equal to everything else that's open on campus to fight around. Our requirements are still pretty restrictive compared to what you experienced in the general public. So it would be appreciated if people put some pressure and all the need to make this as simple as possible for our, not only our graduates, but also for our family and guests that want to come on such a meeting. But things are moving along great. I'm happy that we can have one ceremony this year. Live music, which is good. We've got the dance up and go. We've got the singers ready to go. It's in the feel and seems much more like our normal graduation compared to last. So we're going to be as close to, our goal is to get it as close to a traditional event as possible. Door, club, new math. No rain, it's going to be raining. No rain, keep the rain light.
No basketball.
It will be, yeah. So did the kids start to have the graduation mask today? Yeah, so we did have graduation masks, ordered for the kids, so they would have even more luck. And for the mask guy that went away, it worked. I'm sure it was new mask, but they were beautiful masks. They're wearing in school, but we didn't wear them. They're willing to not wear them, but at least they gave them a lot of, so I'm glad that we were able to do that. Last quick thing, just for the students out there, in the store here, it's good to have those in adversity. We did launch a student body exchange today. It dropped in, it's an activity on our, it's good, but students encourage your friends to hop on there. And what we're really, we're interested in looking at what types of things do the kids, us adults, know about their learning experience over the past fifteen months. As we plan forward, there's some things that we've learned in conversations with small group of students and board members and students that there are some things that students really impressed upon us that should not go away, no matter what the learning conditions are. So there are things out there that we need to know so that we can make sure we keep them going if they work well. And if they didn't work well, we'll be known so that they can go away and not come back. So we'll keep that information going out as we, as we move through. But otherwise, it's a great time to be in school. So if you want to visit a school, start to stop by, but students keep doing their thing.
Yeah, for those of us that do the pride locks, people that, you know, it was doing, how, that those kids didn't care all year long. I mean, it was just unbelievable. But doing the right thing, so all the way to the last.
You're welcome. Yeah, thanks.
You're up next time. What time is session as well?
All right, everybody. So we're going to, I'm going to, this is something that is not necessarily required, however, the ESSER plan requirements. Anything new and anything involving money can usually cause some confusion. So I figured it'd be best to just do a brief presentation on our ESSER plan. The board has a copy of this in draft format. The draft will be going on the district website on Monday. We'll be creating an email address for folks to email Public Commendants, say, so do you or desire. But the plan itself is not overly lengthy. It's about eighteen pages, but there is a lot of legal muck or jumbo and stuff that's not always fun to digest or read. But I figured I'd take an opportunity to just explain to the board, name and terms or any of that, kind of paying attention here. So a quick overview of what ESSER is. So ESSER stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. There are three installments within this funding stream that public schools have access to. The first one is the CARES Act, which was awarded last year. If you can recall, the CARES Act was awarded, I believe, in March or April, or April or May of 2020. The governor of New York claimed all of our CARES Act money and had kept that. So that's just kind of where that, that was last budget cycle. The second iteration of this is the C R R S A, also known as CURSA. CURSA was awarded last December and the governor did as well claim that money. However, it was returned to the district during the budget cycle in May. So we've seen a full act of the CURSA. And the most recent iteration is called ARPA. And that is, mine, was awarded in March of this year and also a complete full act of the district, it does not with public funds. Each burden of these three parts of ESSER have their own legislation that kind of dictates what is within each iteration of ESSER. The ESSER plan is required for ARPA funds only. So it was important to know is, you can hear a lot about plans for this money, this, that, and the other. The provision under ARPA is the only arm of this that requires the district to develop a plan and put a plan on the website. However, our plan is also going to address the CURSA funding, just so that folks are a little bit more aware of what our intended goals are with this funding. CURSA, CURSA stands for the Coronavirus Response and Lead Supplemental Appropriations Act. You can call it CURSA, that has a lot even here again, signed into legislation on December 27th, 2020. These funds are intended for basically the use of youth here, learning loss, facility upgrades for age gap purposes, making sure, trying to increase your ventilation, not for things like adding classrooms, adding the gym, general cosmetic upgrades, that is not the intent of the federal funding. Instructional technology upgrade, social, emotional, mental health, support, sanitation, supply, fashion development, and increasing inactivity in schools. Essentially, all of these are meant towards, how can you, the funding is meant to offset the expenses you had for COVID or future expenses in kind of the COVID group, if you will. There's no requirement for equitable distribution of funds to public schools. That's important in the sense that, because these are federal money, a lot like our title allocations that come from the federal government. A title fund allocation, normally any federal grant money, we are required to put that money with private and local schools within our jurisdiction. Under CURSA and ARPA, that is not the case, although the monetary awards to districts is 100% included to be awarded. Private institutions have separate legislation to support that. So I don't want people to think that the private schools are not getting funding from the federal government. They are. It's just not followed through the school district. They have their own separate legislation for that. These expenses, this money can be used to cover expenses all the way back to March of 2020. So anything that happens from the beginning of COVID go out, what we pay money for, we can use this money to go back and change the accounting process of that and use the money that we had to pay for, for the back and forth, that helps fund budget. There's, there's no plan required for CURSA and loan allocation for CURSA is $6,280,000. ARPA, very similar, stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. Sometimes you see it referred to as ARP. So the federal government can call ARP, you're safe on ARPA. This was signed into legislation on March 11th of this year, same exact purposes for intended use, same requirements for equitable distribution. The difference with ARPA and CURSA, there is a recommended prioritization of use for non-returning expenses. So what the federal government is asking the district to prioritize is use the money to purchase things that are asked over year over year during events or expenses, if that makes sense. It's a lot easier said than done because generally speaking, things that districts need the most are things that happen year over year, right? Personnel, program, those are two big things. But those expenses occur every year and they extrapolate in numbers. It's very rare for a district to be able to have purchases. There are one-time purchases. If you're going to buy it and then you're done with it and you might have to get it for a long time. But we're going to get that. ARPA is intended to be utilized over four school years, ending in the 2024, 2025 school year. That was very large pipe. This, this ARPA funding does require a plan, which is what we're talking about tonight. And our allocation under ARPA is $15,267,141. So in total, we're looking at about $21.5 million federal funding that we had at our, to be used in time from March 2020 up until June of 2025. It was, it is good news. Part of the ARPA plan requirements, so to give you a little bit of community, we ran a thought exchange last week on the ARPA funding. Our question was simple, what thoughts do you have on how we should utilize the federal stimulus fund allocated to the district? The next few slides just goes with details on that. We had 459 participants. The breakdown of that was approximately 59% community, about 29% staff and 2% students or community members that doesn't have students in school right now. Total of 400 new thoughts and 15,000 ratings. I think is where that part is at. The top themes within that survey show that smaller class sizes is important to our community, followed by extra help, supportive staff, you can see all the way down to a fair spot thing. There was, it does not show up tremendously, it doesn't show up in the generated top themes, but when you dig down into the actual change, basically the two main ideas of the book were hire more teachers and renovate the building. And that's where, that's where the two most common thoughts that kept popping up were. These are the top three buckets of thoughts, so class size, smaller, extra help and supporting staff or hiring more support staff. You can see the top three rated thoughts into a category, specifically what the individuals here thought wrote. And you can see the number of, so in this chart, you can see the average rating, a max rating of five, and you can see toward the end of it, the number of people that rated it at that rate. So again, the themes are clearly straightforward and simple. Work, and most of the clients want teachers who live with smaller class sizes, extra help for students and staff in the classroom, and academic support for the kids that may have fallen slightly behind these goals. As we move into proposed funding use, the two things I mentioned that are important for me to understand is hiring more teachers is fantastic, but it doesn't always place the smaller class sizes. If you don't have more classroom, typical classroom full of teachers to work in, okay? So when your buildings are at max capacity for usage, there's nowhere else for a teacher to go. You're not going to reuse the class size to be by adding staff to the district that way. And likewise, unfortunately, we can't simply use this funding to fund this capital project and add classrooms on or do major renovations to the buildings, unfortunately. But there are things within the law that we can do financially to achieve both proposed outcomes with some creative work. Our first proposal is to take the CURSA money, the entire $6.2 million of that, and use it to cover previously incurred expenses from the current school year, 2020 to 2021. What that does is this includes anything related to COVID purchases, not technology, but technology available, but things like cleaning supplies. Death barriers that we bought, if by many, but anything we bought with fucking that. It could be staff expenses.
Thermometers.
The thermometers are adable. We paid very little for those, but now, we're very creative when it comes to aid. And what can be adable, ironically. But yes, the, not the handheld. We have a lot of handhelds in our, the big, the big thing at one. But most of this money is going to be to cover staff costs. So we can, we can give the federal grants, we can charge our personnel cost to the grant. And what that does is that's going to put $6.2 million of money back into our revenue stream from the district state aid and community. And then what we can ensure to do with that, our proposal is to put some of that into the capital reserve so we can completely fill that capital reserve, which we can now use that money to do capital projects over the next couple of years. And then dump some of the extra money in our employee retirement system reserve and then also do that to create a teacher retirement system reserve. What those two reserves do when you start putting money in there is a couple of things. Number one, it's a liquid reserve. So if we needed money immediately for an emergency, like we have to go through an act of God to get that money accessed and out of the budget, out of the reserve and into the budget. Also, what it does is if we do end up with a, let's not come with it, we're not going to have bad state aid here for next year. But if we did and we were looking at having to reduce that, we can use our CRS, CRS reserve to cover any potential loss. And the third thing is CRS, CRS reserve does is it allows us to, and for whatever reasons, the, they think going up to the eight, ten percent a year, I'm not sure. If they come out and say next year, the district share is well above 20%, as opposed to passing that on to the taxpayers, we can offset that difference with our reserves to make sure that we're not negative. So our, in general, what we're asking to do, what we're proposing to do with the CURSA money is take that money, use it to pay for current expenses, take the money that would be saved from that and put it in reserve to make sure that we can save for a lot of things in the future. But they want to be my capital reserve, doing some of the work that we want to do on a building, like adding some classrooms, like upgrading some things, but it's all, it's done without impacting the taxes. Remember, every time we use that capital reserve, we do not have to increase taxes to do our capital budget. So it's a very important. ARPA is a lot different. ARPA is something that, there's a few strengths attached to this. You can see others by word for proposing using 46.2% of that money next year. Uh, you can see other five workers proposing using forty-six point two percent of that money next year. And then for the following three years, using seventeen point nine three percent of that. The reason why the percentages are important is because under the law, you have to use at least twelve and a half percent every year for the next four years. You can't use more than sixty-two and a half percent, which we once given you. So you're required to spread it out, uh, and you have to, there's a cap on the maximum spending. The reason we're, we're upfront on this is because we're, we're, we got two significant one-time purchases proposed for next school year. Uh, the first one being, uh, a company is called Audio Enhancement. The audio enhancement technology is to outfit every classroom in the district with a three hundred and sixty-degree camera and sound system with built-in microphones and speakers. So if you were ever in a remote situation again, a teacher can teach in their classroom without any computer and just walk around the room, the sound is interface, they talk normally, the microphones and the ceiling pick them up, the speakers in the system pick them up, the camera picks up the entire classroom, you can learn from home, no matter what. Uh, on top of that, it is built in with a, uh, integrated system, a panic alert system. So the teacher has a special panic button that stays on then at all times, that they can notify the main office and authorities of an emergency number without any sirens or buzzers going off. It is a, uh, absolute amazing, amazing program. So full, the, the, uh, future for our classrooms against any other form of needed remote learning. The best part about it that generally would concern both teachers is I can put a camera in my room and I can do a tape and audio recorder all the time. It's not how the technology works. The technology is only turned on when the teacher in the classroom turns the technology on. So if the, if you're not in a remote environment and the teacher has a full classroom in front of them and they don't wanna report their lessons, they don't have the technology turned on. If the teacher's got kids that they know are in a hospital for whatever reason and they don't wanna, they don't wanna have to do or kids are suspended, uh, you name it, if there's kids in the classroom and they're not there, and they want to record their lessons, they'll post on the website, tell the kids, go back and watch it later, or live stream and watch it now. They have that option, teacher in the classroom can boot all, all the technology.
So if, if that's not on, can you still use what that panic button, if we don't, and put it down again?
So yes, the panic button can be separated, that tied into the, that's tied into a, uh, integrated alarm system.
Okay.
So this audio enhancement technology in the classroom ties into the, uh, full safety panic button, we've already installed it all over buildings with the captain now. So it's really a, uh, it's just a fantastic product. I, uh, I don't usually go head over heels about stuff like this, I'm more skeptical. But when I saw this connection, I heard a super dense, I'm trying to talk about the benefits that it had for them in the classroom, I felt it was a no-brainer for use of, uh, some of this money as a one-time expense that was happy for your person. What was the cost of it? Uh, it's about two point two million dollars in total. That's, I think, on the high side, I believe we finally got it told today. Uh, when I met with the company, they said all-in cost of five thousand dollars a class, which is really deep if you ask my opinion on what it provides. I, uh, added up the, obviously, we only got ninety-five, we're in the ballpark of a hundred and thirty. Uh, high school and middle school are a little bit different, talk about classes, why I asked, I don't know, a few things. I really, I'd say it probably be a little less, when it all sets up.
So I guess my question would be, we've had lots of conversations about change, long-term changes that will be needed in the district. We've had, we not yet had conversations about the impact of the influx of housing that we talked about earlier. Um, so when we add new classrooms or convert a space like this back to classrooms, how do we, how do we incur that cost of five thousand dollars of classrooms? Is it something that?
You can roll it into the capital project. There's two options, you can roll that into the capital project or, uh, not many schools in New York State are doing this yet. So this, this project is done by the same company that did all of our security stuff and the power, the effort power. This will be an able service in New York State. So my recommendation, we gather the problem, be one of the first schools in New York State to have anything like this, knowing that will need to be replaced, or upgraded, or if, it will be able, all of that now it will be able.
So, so it's not able for us to do the installation, other than under this plan, but if?
It's not able in New York State right now, because nobody's doing it.
And we have to pay the full price now, but in the future, hopefully it will be able, so when the change?
It's going to be, it's going to be able. When I ask the company, it's an able service, they said it's not, but we can make it able for you if you want. But for right now, if it's able, we can't use this money for it. And I can federal fund for any able. So it's not for our benefit, not for our benefit to do that.
I mean, and I guess, I feel like we just, we just haven't had a long enough conversation yet about how we will or will not use remote learning in the future, and no, we haven't gotten enough direction from the state. So I know one of our conversations is that if there's remote learning, you have dedicated remote educators. So I just, I'm trying to resolve that.
I don't think we need it, right?
You wouldn't need it, you wouldn't need it. To reduce staff costs and to be honest with you, uh, in my opinion, I've been an advocate for classrooms and the technology in schools for four years. And I think it's a huge benefit to a teacher and a student. If you can record your lessons and the kid can go home and, and re-watch a portion of lessons, you can use it. And or elementary lessons. So, so I got a secondary and I'm at home now and my secondary didn't remember part of lessons today or something. And I can hop on my teacher's tool path and check that out again. Uh, this, it'll be still, most people are teachers, they know that about it. You're gonna have some that die right in, say, here for me, I wanna do this, and they're gonna record everything. You're gonna have some that are gonna, you know, it's gonna take some time. But the, the benefits to the long-term, uh, access of education for kids is tremendous. And I, I don't wanna get into the details of some of the other things, but districts that have this point is message. Uh, there are schools in states that were on closure watch list because of this clarity that have reduced their discipline up to ninety percent because the kids know that the camera is in the classroom. Whether the camera's on or not, they know that they're not, they might not be able to get away with when they go home and tell mom or dad what happened. It may not have actually, so, uh, and that's not the intent of us behind it. It's why I didn't bring up the complete, our focus is on the structural benefits of the technology.
So can it be moved from present to future or wants to clean that place from one, since we know our teacher's school will be, it has to be.
So, yeah, for the answer, the answer is yes. Uh, we've done it with security cameras, same kind of a thing. Um, if the technology is not outdated and it's still worthy of moving to a new building or a new place, we can uninstall it. How we can make it out. And we do, we've done that with always security.
Oh, okay.
Uh, timeline for installation would be, uh, probably within ten or five, this side. We would start with RFA, uh, knowing that they would most likely use their mobile and work for the office network our way down from there. Uh, like I said, this right now is a, uh, a simple ballpark figure in the plan. Um, until we have the blessing of the board to go ahead and that kind of expenditure, we're not gonna do it. Too deep of a conversation with the vendor, because we don't want that to happen. They've got a big payday coming to find out that it's not gonna happen. But like I said, I believe, uh, as we were coming into the meeting, I saw an email from the vendor that does installation. Uh, he's, uh, supposed to pull up some July and share that, uh, but we're alive and healthy ahead. Our second proposed expenditure would be to, uh, upgrade and purchase brand-new elementary classroom furniture for all buildings in the district. Uh, this would incorporate any furniture that has not been bought within the past five years or if it has been purchased in the past five years, uh, but is not really in good condition, we would upgrade that as well. Uh, we estimate that to be about two million dollars. Most of these businesses, the elementary schools would be seen as the best, they're both still, um, some older than that. We did do a furniture audit, like prior to COVID with our furniture vendor. So we already have an understanding of which, uh, buildings and classrooms are in the most need. Uh, and we already have an idea of which furniture would be repulsed in the new, so this process, uh, the requisition process will be fast. The process that will be slow would be actually getting the furniture, because this is what most districts spend their money on, because there are very few one-time, non-recurring expenses that school districts can use this money for. Uh, elementary furniture, believe it or not, is one of the things that does fall onto the category. So most school districts are using it against the purchase brand new furniture for their students. The only reason why I'm not saying anything besides elementary, uh, as you know, Stroud just got brand new furniture two years ago. ARPA does not have brand new furniture, however, we purchase new furniture every year that ARPA replaces the things that are, uh, most old. So since ARPA's been built, we have had a furniture replacement cycle there every year anyway, so that's December, so we need to post a draft. Um, if we wanted to look at upgrading the ARPA classroom furniture, we could do that as well. That price tag would go from two million to probably about three million, uh, actually three point five million. Uh, I imagine that's been about one point five million to replace the ARPA furniture.
Peter, can you just refresh my memory on, why does this piece come up as not able when we do a building project?
Uh, it's, so, uh, furniture is considered a non-contingent expense. So when you do a building project, there's, uh, two pockets of money that you can fall on. You've got your, uh, with basically, you've got self the school building and then you've got your things to have an outside, sidewalk, your, um, some of your CDs, your parking lot, your landscaping, so those two things. Furniture falls into that second.
Locker.
Yeah, furniture falls into that second, uh, pocket of money. That is the outdoor type of things. And usually the way it works out is ninety percent of the able money is inside the building. Then you're allowed to spend ten percent of that money is able, but the problem is normally when you start doing all your landscaping, sidewalks, and your parking lots and all of that, you don't have room left in what is able under that pocket to add the furniture to it. So you go above your allowable expense.
Community would have to essentially put the bill, that would have to be out of our, only?
Yes, in them. If you design your capital project well, so that that pocket of money that is incidental cost is not above the allowable threshold, then the furniture would be able in the capital fund. Our capital fund has never been done that way. It's never included furniture, meaning, uh, you know, cost, they just included your parking lot, your sidewalk, and everything that they've pocketed in there has taken you up to the threshold, so you can't go above the threshold for it. It's all about budgeting of the capital project and making sure that what you budget for is well above the intention that you all have spent. And I think what happened in Stroud, right? Furniture was a part of the project, it stood as an able. The project went from costing X to begin to change over time, because there was a lot of time that was happening that I couldn't actually work on. Therefore, the cost of things went up and that drove, you know, the work that's doing, and that's why the furniture, everything, I. I know that because of the, the felt, she's been modeling, she's, that's one of the things she was, for, creating furniture. They, they had, I think, one classroom with, with, correct, but what they call it, the desks. But they're done, yeah, yeah.
Those are the ones like in our thing.
That could be, yes, those are the ones like Stroud, yeah, yeah. Unreal, and, and if you really wanna see a good example of this, go to Staley. Uh, we purchased brand-new kindergarten classroom furniture for Staley, uh, at the start of last year. Uh, so you'll see a big difference about what a modern classroom looks like now in elementary school and what classrooms used to look like. Uh, and, and Bellamy has a couple others that have some newer furniture, but it's very different when you go in a classroom of modern furniture and a classroom that's working off the things that's twenty-three years old.
Well, I think that's part of this for people to remember in policies related to COVID, is the creativity that had to be used to fit the kids and distance. So it's important to be, I mean, I, I, I'm not gonna lie, this was a lot to digest, to try to wrap our heads around today. So I am sure more questions are gonna roll in after we read all the pages and, and, and everything. But it's important for the community to have an understanding of, um, different challenges that aren't as obvious as the things that might have come through in the thought exchange. We always want one in all. But the caveat you have on the bottom of this is this is a, this is a one-off, unless some miraculous other funding starts coming through. So we've gotta be smart about how we spend this now for the things that wouldn't be sustainable beyond, or we haven't been able to do in the past. And clearly, how our kids were sitting became one of, how many times did we measure, six feet, three feet, four feet, five feet? A lot, so adaptable furniture is important.
How are we able to spend it on staff, because that wouldn't be a one and done kind of thing?
So, uh, it's not a requirement to spend it on one and done. Recommendation, do your best to spend it on that.
How many times?
Uh, remember another big part of the, the funny thing is, they tell you the spend is on things to address learning loss and social, emotional, mental health. Unless you're buying robots, I don't know how you're doing that. I mean, it's, it's common sense that school districts thrive on programming. It's ninety-eight percent of what we are. So our proposal was take two big buckets of things that we would not normally otherwise be able to purchase without a long time doing, uh, and, and use a good chunk of money there. And then with the rest, try to address some of these, this move of the budget. So the rest of this is a list of staff members of various, very different things. First one, uh, just increasing our community schools, uh, support by about a half a million dollars. Again, these are ballpark figures, doesn't necessarily have to be that. But our proposal would be to, uh, strengthen our partnership with community schools, uh, and if we need some more support to them for our families in our schools that way. Uh, we are talking about increasing our AIF reading and math teachers, if you don't think so. Uh, we would like to increase the AIF reading staff by eight and the AIF math staff by six. Uh, these figures, uh, for any staff are inclusive of personnel, uh, salary and benefit costs, if you're aware. Um, we are proposing the addition of social workers, uh, out of the total of five in the district. We currently have two. Uh, we are proposing the addition of seven parent liaison, one for each elementary school. So a parent liaison is a staff member that works with disability to, uh, work with parents. Uh, and they can help give parents to and from events, they can go to home business, they can help parents. We have one and three.
And we had one at Staley at one point and it was coordinated.
And we go to K P, I don't know why, but I thought it was a volunteer kind of.
We've always had it at K P, but I do have to say, Staley was a five-stick, and we lost that role, it was devastating.
Very helpful at the elementary level, especially navigating. With everything we have that goes on, it's helpful for the family to navigate and to, to, you know, help them navigate and navigate. I'll add their phone, but I'll give my personal conviction, but I got a call for that. Um, you know, what do I gotta do for, for these plans? The, the parent liaison can do a tremendous amount of work that's just the building and moving parents. Uh, it's, it's very helpful. So that, that was something that came out of the, uh, not the thought exchange, but through staff members making that commitment to play. Basically, it would be helpful.
Peter, how, um, I mean, clearly for some of them, you're only talking about thirty-five thousand dollars. I, I would encourage you to have them all, the purpose of the elementary, because I have to tell you, um, and I hope she's okay with me, one of your staff and I, we're having a conversation that our children do not know a lot of senior awards. Okay, so we, you know, we have, um, pretty engaged kids and clearly if I'm on the board and she works in the district, that we didn't know, then how come parents don't know? I think it's even harder and I, I think, you know, when we had the, the student forum, the parent, the students have become so overwhelmed by being kind of entrapped in their device. And I gotta check my email, I've gotta check every piece of Google click, that they're missing things. So I think there are things that we're missing and I think Jordan can agree with that, that, um, there's got, there should still be a link. I think that's always been a conversation, and I just took a seven, the kid gets to seventh grade and you think that they're suddenly gonna have a handle on everything and maybe not. At North Fluke in high school, there's still kids. So I would ask you to consider doing that across the board, because even in our parent group, in our parent forum, the parents talk about human link that we're missing information or not being connected to what was happening.
We can certainly, and I'll tell you right now, I have two considerations about all these kinds of costs, but I'm afraid not to find. So there's, increasing that sign is not really solved, we're not gonna argue with that. Of course, we want a lot of these activities, it's a tremendous, it's a business. So we're trying to be as conservative as we can to make sure that we can move these things. But if, uh, like I guess, we will do more corrupt, then we're going to, you can have that conversation before. Uh, and, and those conversations also close forever, they don't have to happen until we call the department, right? It doesn't have to be all tied to ARPA at all, I can be a, if that we, we want to do that. Um, last three things we have on here, uh, the proposal of two curriculum coordinators with specific teachers, actually not administrators. Uh, one to be the K two level, one to three-six level. Something we learned this year with COVID and our teacher coordinators at the elementary level did not work if teacher had to use here, but so astronomical, that some of the other important work related to, uh, disseminating information and helping other teachers out in their, in their, in their time of need or asking, answering questions about curriculum from a teacher if you were a teacher coordinator became very challenging. And really, uh, you saw a lot of teacher coordinators kind of just not be able to meet the goal of sharing information, helping write books and helping solve curriculum. Uh, so we're proposing that at the K, one for K two, one for three-six, that we have students and their teachers, uh, to work with teachers on writing their curriculum, uh, doing professional development, best practice with the traveling school, uh, and just to help people out when they have needs, uh, and have them out of the classroom so they can focus on, uh, helping people, uh, have better instruction versus having to do their own job all day long and then trying to find a few hours at night to help a colleague that might be with you. Y'all know that if you're doing your job really. Y'all know that if you're doing your job during the day, you can't physically go watch somebody do something and observe. So uh that's where our proposal for that came from. Uh, we also are.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question, so I know one of the big things, again, that came up in the parent forum and the teacher forum was a lack of consistency across the district in what kids were getting, say, if you were in fifth grade at Bellamy versus fifth grade at Dance Board. So are, was this a response to that or is, are you hopeful that this position will?
It's not a response to that, but it would help that. And so that's created by what I talked about earlier, so if I'm the fifth grade coordinator right now, I can be wherever I go and tell them. But I'm, I'm responsible in some part for helping all of the fifth grade teachers everywhere uh know what the curriculum is, how it's changing, now asking for input on things, uh providing support if they have a question, communicating different things that come from Vino or Chris or myself, right? And as you can, that's, that's a near impossible task. If I'm stuck developing, I can't get out to the M board and do the M board teachers, I can't get up to those students. So it's not as a result of some of those conversations, but it addresses, so it should address those concerns to have somebody that has that flexibility to go from those buildings and say, hey, you know what, the fifth grade and joy, they're doing this, but the fifth grade over here is uh you know, that's the, they're doing some completely different, let's figure out one, one much better, let's see if that you can be taken out of it.
So would this eliminate the coordinators at each grade level or would they tie them together?
Because it would be nice if you tied them together in some way, shape, or form, but we have to negotiate like what a five is looking for.
Well, right, but conversely, just like that one person can't be doing their job and at other buildings, the one person who's gonna have to go between all the buildings can't necessarily, it'd be nice to be like, okay, this is.
There'd be too many people, you have all these other people doing that, and it's true.
It's a, it's a conversation for us to have the R P.
Yeah.
Right now, we're just trying to find ways to improve some of the uh struggles that people have related to.
Yeah.
Um, another piece that came out, uh this is trying to address some of the equity pieces of the funding requirement. Uh, we are proposing an additional position of the speaking deep equity and inclusion coordinator. Uh, again, this does not have to be, I I actually wrote coordination, not coordinator on purpose, it's not, you need to be an administrator. Uh, we prefer it to be uh a social service leadership or some type, we just don't know if we can find something in social service law that will allow that to happen. Uh, but the intent here is the Equity Task Force has done a lot of great work. Uh, the teacher center here in Rome has done a lot of great work with special development with teachers. Uh, and we've got so many things starting to happen all at the same time that uh between the seven or eight people on Equity Task Force and the few administrators involved in it and the few teachers on the teacher side involved in it, uh we're starting to notice that we're missing things or things aren't, aren't going to uh plan, I guess is the best way to say it. Things aren't being done as greatly as they could be done because we don't have any one individual that's dedicated to this task and has the time and ability to make sure that these things are happening. So uh we would, we would propose that we uh have somebody to the coordination of those tasks to make sure that we get from twenty to twenty-two to talk about moving to the future and uh having to upgrade our curriculum to address what we believe will be forthcoming uh regulations from S D D. Uh, and the last piece of the puzzle, to circle back all the way to the beginning and try to increase the capital reserves would be that we use from the upper funds to offset the cost of the uh district consultants uh for redistricting services that we are looking to uh meet this and possibly contract this. Um, the two, the, the, the fastest way to reduce class sizes in reality is maybe just a thing for restructuring studies and then implementing that, that will be done even faster than adding classrooms. Uh, so we can use the funding for that, it will address some of the issues that the community has with smaller classrooms, uh things of that nature. Uh, and it's about the general fund budget that we, I talked about, the number was more of a mobile strategy. Uh, we have funding, need to take care of that and hopefully uh make that happen and then forward.
Now, we can attach to them on the.
We're trying to gather that, yeah. Uh, it's like, uh, it's like, it's like, it's too wet, it's too wet, it's too. Um, so important to know about all of that, as we prepare for the future, all of these things that you know are returning expenses, like mentioned, this would mean that come twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, we need to be prepared to add about two point eight thirty dollars in expenses to the general operating budget for the tax, when the federal fund went out. Uh, I will tell you that that amount of money is uh high, that's a high estimate, not a real number and the reason. The, the way I got to that math was I added up everything you see uh below the classroom furniture to get the whole number. And then for twenty-two, twenty-three, I added four percent, for twenty-three, twenty-four, I added four percent, twenty-four, twenty-five, I added four percent. There's no way it needs to go to those categories, it can go up four percent or off, although some of these things will not increase at all because they aren't exactly distributed, they don't have a direct increase, but four percent is a very uh uh large number to make sure that we can be prepared to cover the cost. I believe that that's the main ability we talk towards in two twenty-one, seven, done, but I want to make sure you understand how I got to that number. Uh, you always wanna be the conservative positive in the money, right? Over budgeting under stress.
That's what's the bottom line, it's just like one side. After this money is done, we pay for the one year of debt, we're responsible to pay it for every additional.
After twenty, twenty.
So this is.
Five years. June, after June twenty twenty-five, we are responsible for the cost of the cost.
Okay.
There's nothing that means you have to maintain them through that time or after that time, but the, the point is we need to make sure that people are aware and they're aware that there will be added costs and then be down the road.
So once we're this coordinator there, um, you get a hundred thousand, so would that be twenty-five a year, is that within or not a year? Right?
I, I have to.
The person couldn't make the.
It would probably be somewhere.
So understand, when we budget your home, we have round figures, so every teacher, no matter what you are, we budget a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that's.
So that's not what the total cost is of a person, but it should not cost more than that for most, for most. So it's not a, this is not a dollar to dollar, it's an estimated worst case scenario.
But as a member of the Equity General, as I can say, this was brought forth by all the members of the committee and from subsequently doing the education meetings, education task force meetings with Dr. Fontana and and these groups, that the losses from COVID only exacerbated the problems that already existed for our most struggling students. And that all boils down to equity. So as Peter was saying, we have these great ideas and Paul can attest to this, Paul can, you know, we sit on this committee and we talk about these things we wanna do, but we're all doing it as a volunteer or in addition to our regular role. So we wanted to do an equity task force, we wanted to have some events in the building, we wanted to make some videos and testimonials. There was no person to own that from the, once the idea came to the table. So all these things that shouldn't be happening, that a lot of these items talk about, addressing loss among our low-income students, um, you know, addressing our most vulnerable, I feel like they overlap. So at first I was a little reluctant to that, but the more I've been part of those meetings all year, there's so much more we could be doing that we can't because no one can do it outside the front who are being on the committee.
I think you wonder what a person's gonna do the whole year for that, when you, and your, and social workers work and I help a lot with stuff we could talk about, helping, you know, the students with their things.
So we have to put power together of.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that.
I'm not sure what you're pressing.
I didn't have a question, I just made some.
She's concerned about that, I'll wait a minute.
Was that the D E I coordinator?
Yeah.
But that's not a person, so.
Oh, no, no.
No, we're supposed to.
That should have to be a person. It's gonna be somebody, I, I wrote, I wrote for a reason because I didn't want people to think it's gonna be a third, I admit. The intent is not to have people that are necessarily intended to have people that were made all of our. But that includes curriculum development, that includes uh job evaluation, professional development, building. There's a lot to it. Now, uh, what will, look like when we're some stuff, you all know, you can use all of this, bringing a doctor's history, bringing it all over the board, all those things are still up for the community. Uh, the plan, just so everybody's aware, and I think I mentioned earlier, but a reminder, the plan is simply something that we put on paper and put on our list, not, it doesn't need to be board approved, doesn't need to be community approved, there's need to be community presented, there's not to be anything like that. So here, this is the federal government's way of saying, we're giving you a lot of money and you just wanna make sure that you thought about it. Right, all purchases still need to go on a board agenda, all these things need to go on a board agenda. Uh, anytime we alter our plan, plan alters, we have to update the plan every six months for the next four years. There's a lot to this thing, but it's very fluid, unlike a lot of other things, okay? So what we're talking about today is here's our ideas uh that we plan to move forward with. However, it also needs to go through this irregular purchasing and uh pointing process. Just so you guys, just so you guys are aware of that.
Peter, I feel like the one thing that the, that has been stressed every time they talk about the allocation of the funds was item thirteen on page nine of the document, which was planning and implementing activity related to summer learning and supplemental at the school programs. Um, and there was another item about, um, I feel like there was also a lot of conversations, or maybe I'm thinking of the governor's funding related to pre-K, so I don't see that we've, um, that the plan talks about those two items, we need to speak to that a lot.
We already have all kinds of actual school activity, summer programs, you can't have anymore, we got to forget. Uh, the after-school programming, we try, but because of the child care licensing department, you need one agency to have a license for one building. Uh, you can't have multiple, you keep running multiple after-school programs in the building, there's just no way to be around that. But we already do them and we already have funding for opportunities, that would be something that you could say, uh, we didn't spend money on this, that would have been something where you would have said, okay, you spent money on this, you're working on it, backfill that with the first money, but we do all of those things. There's, there's not much, well, we added the uh the science camp this summer, which is already funded for. Uh, so we felt, we've already got that earmarked, but I'm using things that we just have planned for.
I, I know that, um, a lot of parents have discussed that child care, you know, we know, but that has been one of the biggest concerns of, of this new climate and, um, one of the conversations we're hearing was related to, we, we do a great job with that, we don't really do it as a pre-K, a pre-K ends at two. And some of those parents can't get there to get those kids, so I, I didn't know, um, I know we sort of, we'll add that, that, I'll get another time, but I know the pre-K funding is funny and that it's not really coming to us unless we're starting something new. We already have existing programs, we're a little more limited, um, but there have been just such a federal and state push on.
Well, the pre-K thing is, that is not, not an alternative agency in the community that wanna do pre-care, uh, pre-K child care after the two plus timeframe. And if there are, then we can work around that. Uh, we haven't had anybody approach us and ask if they can, uh, partner to be the daycare provider for our pre-K program, but there's been there's going on there, that's a good idea.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, people are listening, that they know that we're talking about the things that we've heard, you know, you know. It was very important to everyone who participated in the varying forums that we were responsive to, this is everything and the things that are in the thought exchange, so, um, there's a lot to think on. But thank you, very comprehensive.
Very helpful.
Thank you, I'm glad to have you come and done that. Thank you. From eight. Resolution accepted, sending the, on recognition for middle school.
Is that what you're, my, my, guys, I'm in chocolate chip, Katie, you're gonna have to.
I want them.
Superintendent, so sending it to be accepted by the Board of Education, I need the resolution.
I, I missed people operations, I just have a question about the item on Nancy whether, so she's stuck resigning her teacher coordinator position, we're not moving her. Right, did you have a little hard conversation there? Thanks, Gordon, I'm glad you noticed me. Love you, Nancy.
You know, where are we, usually the board gets a annual, um, special executive report that's put together, you know, that. But yeah, we're, you could really use that based on your, all the things that happen, you know, for your learning and everything. It's kind of, for the board, I'm yeah, sure, you know, we're, you've mentioned a number of times where students.
What I would call the book that's got to get us for a presentation comment, so the new board members have a chance to get a little bit, and give you, I don't know what to expect. A lot changes this meeting now.
Right, thanks, Doctor. Um, the other ten, all in favor, so I see you both. To announce the regular agenda. Six-nine. Finally, uh, I.
New page.
Oh, I'm looking at a cool.
So he's got the next one with his notes around the old one.
Uh, so I, I'm just finding if I thought we would adjust, um, which we have adjusted before, but this healthcare dividend issue, I think, uh, I think we've come to a consensus on that, but I wanted to make sure. So my thought is that what we agreed to uh in various forums is that the, um, the part of the, first of all, the dividend that's coming back from the healthcare program, um, to the district, uh, comes this month. That about, um, twelve percent of that is, is related to the individual premiums, is, is like the deal. And we had talked about, uh, giving those individuals credit, so they can, the premiums that are gonna be charged in that, in this new year. And the, the rest of the money, uh, which is the total of, I rounded these numbers off, two million dollars, is gonna go back to the government. Is that?
That's a, we didn't discuss that.
Yeah.
That's what I don't feel big enough. It's all.
Yeah, I think that's a tough option, I would think that was the one we were.
What I just need to know is are, are we, are we getting refunds in some way to give them to the faculty, to let them go, to let them go to the room, and then we. Think we're there, involve any negotiations with the user, I don't think it's good enough.
No, we're just giving them credit, but they wouldn't do anything, right? That we can see on paper.
There's a couple of ways you could do it, you could, uh, if you, if you.
Which one?
You could, you could send them, uh, for the year to be put out. There's, there's three different options, but it's not that.
And you folks talk louder because it's impossible to hear you out here.
Sure, John, so we're talking about the.
John, you're really far away.
You don't even know how far away I am.
I know you're out of the car. We're talking about the healthcare dividend and I know, I mean, we've talked about this before and other times, but I just reiterated what I thought was the position that we kind of agreed with individually, uh, which was that we would, uh, we would refund, uh, in the form of credits in the following year, uh, the thing is that I think eight, uh, this past year, which amounts to about twelve percent of the total. Well, the amount is about twelve percent, you know, it's twelve percent of the dividend that's coming back to the front. So it's gonna go to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is that, is that a motion we have to make or how, how does that work?
Formulate.
You guys are like a, a robot now.
Okay.
Did you catch what we said?
I don't hear anything after I ask my question. I don't hear anything after I ask my question.
No, which is, I was gonna say, he was having issues too, so.
That's what's causing the robot. Okay. Just gotta talk loud for a minute.
Okay, John, so I'll repeat myself. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's much better, much better.
Yes, okay.
We're zooming in.
So, John, the discussion dealt with the, uh, the dividend that is being, uh, sent to the district by the consortium that reflects the, the overage or the excess monies from this past year.
Oh, yeah, make sure you can hear him before you go through it.
Yeah.
Can you hear me, John?
This is your.
I just got another text.
This is your volume.
You have to project enough that you make the line go all the way up.
Okay, we seem to, Mr. Anderson, you know, I get to make trouble here.
Okay.
Me?
It's funny because you are very low sometimes when we don't play.
Alright.
I, I just got it, it's way better.
Okay, so, so Mr. Nash, we're gonna go through this one more time, uh, and this is your area, maybe I should be listening to you, but, uh, it was the, the dividend that was declared by the consortium and how we were going to, uh, distribute it, uh, or keep it in our general fund relative, uh, to the, uh, the people who had paid premiums in the last year, and, and so we decided we would refund those premiums in the form of credits for this coming year. And that amounted to about twelve percent of the total dividend, that's how it got calculated out. And that's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars or something like that. And, uh, and that's how we were gonna do it, the, the, the financial people were gonna work out, uh, how to make those credits, uh, or reductions in premiums in the upcoming year. You agree with that?
I do, yeah, I do, yes.
Okay.
I, I guess my question was, is that board action or just something that, uh, administration just does?
I think once we come to a consensus, we don't need a resolution for that, the, the administration's just gonna go out and do it.
Okay.
So we're looking for the consensus, and I think we have it.
Yep, I'm good with it.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, um.
And then the remainder is going into the gentleman.
Yes. Okay, I think the rest of this is, it were up to people operations, right? And page ten.
Yep.
You're on, Lee.
Alright, can you hear me okay? Uh, resolution to change position, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following position change. Richard Andrews from Building Maintenance Mechanic Second Shift to Building Maintenance Mechanic First Shift at a salary of fifty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars effective six eleven two thousand twenty-one, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item two, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel probationary, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following non-instructional personnel probationary as outlined on the agenda, so moved.
Back in.
Seconded by Mr. Nash, any discussion?
Can you just clarify for me that the fifty thousand dollars and the fourteen-five-ten are the full salary that will be prorated?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a full year's salary.
I was looking at fifty thousand dollars and then three months and really trying to write my head around that. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action item three, resolution to extend unpaid leave of absence, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby extends the following unpaid leave of absence, Catherine Armstrong, speech therapist, four twenty-seven twenty-one to five twenty-eight twenty-one, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, sir, Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Action item four, resolution to appoint intramural personnel, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following intramural personnel, Todd Lanzey at Stroud for thirteen, uh, thirteen hundred and ten dollars, and Dave Petrelli at Stroud for thirteen hundred and ten dollars, so moved.
Uh, moved and seconded by, Davis, any discussion? This was, this was something that was already completed, we just.
So we missed them on the last go-around, they've been doing intramurals since kids were back in full, uh, Aprilish? Just missed it on the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item five, resolution to approve deputy treasurer stipend, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves a one-time stipend of one thousand dollars for the following individual for services rendered between six-one twenty-one and six-thirty twenty-one, Kristen Sullivan, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, Mr. Malachi, any discussion?
Yeah, I ju, I just have a question, um, so will this involve more hours for her, or will she do it all within her normal workday?
Rob, you, my guess is it will involve some additional hours, John, it requires some different things with signing checks and doing work with the banks. But Rob, do you want to answer that more directly?
Yeah, she's gonna be doing more hours, she already stayed a couple nights, I was there actually after hours when she was working, so, more hours.
And there won't be any overtime with that then, correct?
Correct, the way I understand it.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action item six, resolution to appoint instructional personnel probationary, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel probationary, Kim Mersch, assistant principal at eighty-two thousand five hundred, and Bridget Gates, art teacher at forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine, prorated on the effective dates as outlined on the agenda, so moved.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item seven, resolution to appoint summer personnel, summer school personnel, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following summer school personnel as outlined on the agenda extensively, so moved.
Back in.
Moved and seconded, uh, we'll get that one in at the end, and, uh, any discussion?
I think it's important for leaders, read each individual name.
I agree.
I, I'm sure you would think that.
As your parting gift.
I am, I am all about efficiency and effectiveness though, so if you wish to reference those, you can find them on three pages in the agenda.
Peter, can you, um, just, just as a follow-up, does, did we fill all of our required positions, or might there be some?
These positions are for the district's internal, uh, support learning summer school program. We have filled all positions for both the week elementary program and support learn.
Four, four programs, that's supportive learning program?
Uh, no, the four-four-four program is the summer week through both, that is completely staffed and good to go.
So this is, but this is separate from that?
Correct, this is the, that's education that we run internally. Yep.
That duly.
Did we vote?
We didn't vote.
No, we did not vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're waiting for her to read the name.
I believe we're waiting for, uh, a call to action there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item eight, resolution to create positions, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby creates the following positions, English teacher, health physical education teacher, twelve-to-one-to-three secondary support learning teacher, two secondary resource teachers, a fifteen-to-one secondary support learning teacher, eight-to-one-to-one elementary supported learning teacher, elementary resource teacher, district-wide E N L teacher, and principal clerk supported learning, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item nine, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel temporary, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following non-instructional personnel as temporary, Kiana Walker in supported learning, senior office typist, at a salary of thirty thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars, effective six fourteen twenty-one to twelve thirteen twenty-one, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, sir, Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion?
I, can you clarify that?
So, what's happening here, Kiana is our front, uh, desk, uh, staff right now. She did take the test for senior office specialist that I mentioned earlier, that civil service will not release the results for. Uh, so she is willing to take a temporary position pending the results of those tests to help out support learning, to help get some of that workload done, that's kind of very diverse of learning. She's running the risk of losing this job if the test results don't come back as unique.
So this is in addition to, or please?
Probably so.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action item ten, resolution to appoint summer laborers, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following summer laborers as outlined on the agenda, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, sir, Mr. Malachi, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, action item eleven, resolution to appoint technology interns, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following technology interns, Dylan Mazur and Brendan Hetzinger at twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour, effective date seven-one twenty-one, six-thirty twenty-two, so moved.
Moved and seconded by, Lisa, oh, any discussion? Do these are students that work with the technology people during, they're doing student?
Yes.
Yes.
They're not current students.
They're former.
Yeah, they're former.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, I ju, I just want to reiterate what a fantastic time it was to have this committee very happy with its progress, and our average meeting time was twenty-eight minutes, uh, including executive sessions. Uh, our next committee meeting is to be determined by the next committee chair.
Thank you very, thank you much, Lee.
Thank you, Lee.
For your preciseness. And we'll have more to say next week, or two weeks from now, right, for our recording members. Next committee meeting, well, that's the one we just had, uh, and the minutes were, uh, as you, I think, Kelly set those out today, I think, so, okay. Moving on to policy, Steve.
Item number one, resolution to accept the second reading and adoption of policy number two-two-four-five, student liaison representative. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the second reading and adoption of policy number two-two-four-five, student liaison representative be accepted by the Board of Education, I move this.
Seconded by Mr. Patrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number two, resolution to accept the second reading and adoption of policy number one-four-two-zero, complaints about curricula or instructional materials. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the second reading and adoption of policy number one-four-two-zero, complaints about curricula or instructional materials be accepted by the Board of Education, I move this.
Moved and seconded by.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three, resolution to accept the second reading and adoption of regulation number one-four-two-zero-dash-R, complaints about curricula or instructional materials. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, a second reading and adoption of regulation number one-four-two-zero-R, complaints about curricula or instructional materials be accepted by the Board of Education, I move this.
Moved and seconded by, sir, Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, resolution to rescind policy eight-two-zero-zero, criteria for the selection, use of instructional materials, textbooks, library books, or other media. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight, eighty-two-hundred, criteria for the selection and use of instructional materials, textbooks, library, books, and other media be rescinded by the Board of Education. I move this with a question, do we usually say abolish or rescind? Okay. Okay.
Moved and seconded by.
Okay, it's been a while since we took any of these off the books.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, resolution to rescind regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-one, administrative procedure to implement board policy related to selection of library and media resources. Glad to get rid of that one just for the long name. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-one, administrative procedure to implement board policy related to selection of library and media resources, be rescinded by the Board of Education, I move it.
And seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Item six, resolution to rescind regulation number eight-two-zero-zero-point-two, parents request to withhold certain materials from their child. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-two, parents request to withhold certain materials from their child be rescinded by the Board of Education, I move this.
Moved and seconded by, you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action item number seven, resolution to rescind regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-three, parents complaint regarding instructional materials. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-three, parents complaint regarding instructional materials be rescinded by the Board of Education, I move this.
Moved and seconded by.
No, it's a softball.
That was the one we were talking about.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number eight, resolution to rescind regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-four, library bill of rights. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-four, library bill of rights be rescinded by the Board of Education, I move this.
Moved and seconded by. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, resolution to rescind regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-five, school library bill of rights. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that regulation eight-two-zero-zero-point-five, school library bill of rights be rescinded by the Board of Education, I move this.
Seconded, seconded by, oh, any discussion?
Uh, I just want to wrap this up by saying all of these items are being removed to, because they were replaced by the updated policies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Jonathan and Joe, do we want to try to schedule another meeting in the next two weeks, or do you prefer that we?
I'd leave it to John as to whether or not he wants to have one more meeting now if he wants to.
I have the feeling that, uh, no matter if I, say yes, let's have a meeting or not, we're still gonna have things that go to the next, uh, committee, so I'll leave it to the committee chair.
Nice move, Jan.
I am good with either and.
My hands are clean.
Okay. Joe made the call. Thanks, Joe, for taking one for the team. Um, Jonathan, I want to thank you, it has been an absolute pleasure, we have done some very good work, we have, um, streamlined some processes, and I appreciate the time that we have been able to work together on this committee.
Thanks, Tanya, thanks, Joe, it's been good. And thank you out there to, uh, John Leonard, who I know is not watching this meeting right now.
Not in a million years, but I'll relate to that.
It's been a pleasure to serve with you guys.
Same here.
Yes, thanks, Jonathan.
I'd also like to comment, uh, on boards, you had a pretty nice article on policy. You probably old head, you guys, but they talked about the philosophy and how they subdivided the different policies. I thought it was pretty cool.
I, I got your part of it, but it is good. And I've been, actually, um, I have in my queue, um, a policy webinar as well. So there are, again, I love those useful resources and I think maybe when we reform the committee, I don't know if Joe's tired of it yet or not, but, um, that it would be, it would be a useful tool for, um, anyone new coming out of policy. It's very good in how to dissect and compose policies. So. Very helpful. Thank you, John. Thank you. I enjoy it.
Good job.
As long as I have a lawyer to consult. Thank you.
And, and I know, I, I'm sorry to butt in. I know I have to also say to Steve Hampi, thank you, because I served on policy with him as well, and I know he is watching, so.
Oh, Steve. Okay, so, uh, under miscellaneous business, do we have anything? Executive session. And under all business, we've taken that off the agenda, that item. So it is anticipated that we will move, uh, the motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. So moved. So moved and seconded.
Lisa is quick. Took her two years, but she's there now.
Oh, am I? Just for tonight.
Hi.
Hi.
On your post? We will not be coming back into regular.
Peter, did you leave the, did you send the link?
Yes, it's on the Google. It'll be the same link.
Same link, okay.
New Google.
New one.
New one, okay.
Sorry. Who was the first on that one?